All right. Call the order for Watertown City Council meeting for August 18th of 2025. I'm going to pass the gavel right now to Deputy Mayor Peters.
Thank you. Would you guys please rise while Addie, Ms. Addie makes her public prayer debut with us tonight? She's been practicing. Come on up, honey. Yeah, you can come up there and turn the mic on. And then Branch, her brother, will be helping with the background vocals. Yeah.
Say, dear Jesus.
Thank you.
Thank you for blessing our city. Yes. And give us wisdom to make good choices. Amen. Okay. Good job.
We practiced for three months on that, so. We're gonna go with the pledge now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Mormon?
Here.
Jurans?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Hoyer?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. The chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Councilman Peters. Seconded by Councilman Allen. Any conversation on that? Hearing on the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to open forum. If there is anyone here in the public who would like to address the council on something that is not on today's agenda, now is your chance to do so. I'll close the open forum. We will go straight into item 9A. And because 9A and 9B are very similar, I'm going to let our city manager testify to both of those at one time. We will have separate votes on both of them, but they are both very similar. So, item 9A is an approval of a change order for the Wells Fargo renovation in addition to City Hall to Huff construction contract for a decrease of roughly $50,000 for a new contract amount of $4,204,558. Item 9B is an approval of amendment number five of a professional services agreement for additional construction services associated with the City Hall renovation project with TSP Incorporated, increase in the amount of $7,000 roughly for the total contract of City Manager Steger.
Thank you. Item 9A is a change order with Huff Construction resulting in a decrease of the contract amount. The building has been largely completed and we are in the warranty phase. The changes initiated in the terms of the contract were various things such as changing the appliance package, changing some door hardware that resulted in some overall decreases to the contract amount. The second change order is a change order with our architectural firm, TSP. These were changes initiated by the city staff and largely revolved around things such as ductwork changes, electrical locations, and some concrete footing work with the garage area. And so there's a change order of about $7,300 on a $400,000 contract for the architectural services. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve item 9A? Motion made by Councilman Jurans, seconded by Councilman Peters. I will grant council leniency to ask questions on either 9A or 9B or comments, and I will do so now. Any questions or comments? All right, we're going to vote on 9A. All those in favor of 9A, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. 9B, any questions or comments? All right, those in favor will say aye, opposed nay, of item 9B. If you're in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Do we get a motion?
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, I need a motion for 9B. Make a motion by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of 9B, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 10A is a first reading of an ordinance providing for supplemental appropriation for the general fund, park and rec fund, E91 fund, and airport fund. We'll go to our finance officer, Kristin Bobzine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is the ordinance that it's our first reading for a budget supplement. I will say that of these items, only three had not been previously approved by the council. All the other ones have been approved at other meetings. Those are, the police department had an equipment maintenance, it was for training equipment that is backed by some drug fund money that came from the state, so it's just that we have to supplement the expenditure side of it. The other one that hasn't been per se pre-approved by the council was the mosquito control funds of 20,000. There is the potential even at the end of the year, we might need more. We've definitely seen an uptick of the cost of that spraying supplies, but also that we've been out kind of doing that. And then the last one is for the park and recreation fund. At the golf course, we did, we are asking for a supplement for, it was an acid injection equipment to fight the zebra mussels. So, that's your 13,900. Otherwise, the rest of these had kind of been discussed and approved. So, this is the first reading. The second reading will come at the next one, and this will supplement the 2025 budget. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the first reading. No motion is necessary, but questions and comments are encouraged. Does anybody have said questions or comments? Has there been a worse year for mosquito abatement? Have we ever spent more money than what we have this year? I don't remember a wetter year.
I do. I think back around that 18, 19, we were, we had the same issue. I do think the cost of the material has went up, the supplies has went up.
I will also share this on mosquitoes. Our wastewater team tracks the West Nile detections in the traps that we have, and I think we're up to 17 detections this year, which is an all-time record. And so the science and data actually is supporting continuing the fight against mosquitoes.
Councilman Peters.
Quick question. You mentioned, Kristin, if we need more than the 20 grand. Is that pulled from unrestricted cash then, if there's more needed?
That's correct. Yep.
Councilman Hoyer.
I was just gonna ask if previously, did we get state funds or anything to control this, and then were those altered in any way this year? Or did we get the same amount?
We, in the past, have standardly received between like six to maybe eight, nine thousand dollars. And that does support sometimes on the, we've used it a little bit for equipment as well, but that's it. That's all we get. So, the rest of the cost between personnel and supplies comes from the city. Yep.
Any further questions or comments? All right, we'll see this back in a couple weeks for a second reading. Item 10B is a first reading of an ordinance revision of the city of Watertown to amend ordinance title 12, adding chapter 12.30 in relation to mobile vendors. City Manager Steger.
Thank you. The ordinance in front of you for the first reading tonight is an ordinance that was developed with the assistance of three council members, as well as our engineering and internal staff to establish a permit process for mobile food vendors in the city of Watertown. Thank you. The ordinance in front of you for the first reading tonight is an ordinance that was developed with the assistance of three council members, as well as our engineering and internal staff, to establish a permit process for mobile food vendors in the city of Watertown. Couple of key highlights, we're looking at an annual fee of $100 per mobile vendor. The fee will result in a permit issued by the city engineer's staff. The ordinance does establish locations on public property where mobile food vendors can can provide vending services. I will note that this ordinance does not in any way interfere with a vendor's ability to establish their their site on private property. It does address a concern in terms of setting up in front of a business location. It does require special approval from the city engineer and approval of an adjoining business owner before we would allow a vendor to set up on a city street. And so I think that's addressed a concern that that some council members have had in the past. It has some standard provisions around liability insurance and identifying the indemnification requirements of a mobile vendor. I'll stand by if you have any questions. I do anticipate upon second reading, we will follow it with a fee resolution to establish the $100 fee at that time.
Thank you. This is the first reading. No motion is necessary, but does anyone have any questions or comments? I would like to thank the staff members who worked extra on this to bring forward this revision, and also the councilmen who showed up to that meeting. I know Councilman Hoyer was there, and Councilman Allen was there?
I was not.
No? But.
Councilman Mormon was present.
So I want to thank those that showed up, but I know that a lot of us have spent a lot of extra time on it as well to offer our suggestions even outside of that. But does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, we'll move to item 12A, an approval of a resolution resetting the on-sale liquor fee for full-service restaurants pursuant to chapter 2.02 of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. City Manager Steger. Oh, Councilman Hoyer?
I'd just like to say I'll be abstaining from this item.
Thank you. City Manager Steger.
This is a resolution that received the first discussion at the prior council meeting. It's being brought back before you today upon the request of two council members. At this point, we'll stand by to answer any questions that you have on the reading of the resolution.
Thank you. I think it's fair to let Councilman Jerrance, he was the prime sponsor on this, to use a legislative term, but Councilman Jerrance, being the person who originally requested this, I think it's fair if you get to pitch your proposal.
Well, I don't know why it takes a pitch, but I get what you're talking about. Really, essentially, it's a fee right now. It's a taxation. It's a penalty if you want to start a restaurant and serve a drink in this town. What I'd like to do, though, is, I don't know if you would call it a motion, but I would like to ask that we set that fee. We had this discussion at, two weeks ago, that we would discuss setting the fee at 25,000 for this.
Okay. I am going to wait until after we take a motion, because, although we could probably do that as part of the motion, but but I will ask Councilman Peters, he was the second, he was the second councilman to pitch it. So if he's okay seconding that price point, then I think we could put that in, at least for the sake of discussion, so that we have a price point to discuss from. Councilman Peters, do you have anything to say?
Actually, thanks for asking. I'm actually gonna read an email that I've got from a constituent on this topic, because it summarized so nicely, and I'll leave it anonymous here. But bear with me here, I wanted to just share this with everybody publicly. Kyle, I just want to reach out to express my support for the proposed amendment to the provisional liquor license ordinance and encourage the council to move forward with the changes suggested by Councilman Jerrance. Quality food is the cornerstone of any great city. New restaurants have long faced an uneven playing field due to license requirements alongside other challenges such as high startup costs, rising food prices, and so on, making the restaurant business a very high-risk endeavor. Those who participate, those who purchased liquor license decades ago have had an advantage for far too long, and now it's time to make the financially feasible changes for the betterment of our community. We should welcome new entrepreneurs, not only for their tax revenue, but also as a heart, as the heart and soul of the city. With the requirements as they stand, we are effectively telling our citizens that these special licenses are reserved for big-name businesses or those with deep pockets. The councilmen, the council should prioritize ensuring all citizens have an opportunity to thrive. The current state of the license prevents many from taking a chance on us. The provisional liquor license does not come come with any risk and disadvantages. The 60-40 rule means that these entrepreneurs need to rely on excellent food service, food and service, not alcohol sales, among other inherent challenges. Business model failure with no licensed resale value, potential license loss over incorrect split, and non-transferability for events, to name a few. This new license may even be a better fit for some of our current businesses, i.e. financially better for them to sell their current license and reinvest in their business. Furthermore, protecting past investments is not the council's duty, nor is limiting the free market. I would hate to see the council limit how many coffee shops, hairstylists, photographers, boutiques, casinos, sign companies, and/or other gas stations we have, simply because someone was here first. Speaking as a business owner, I welcome competition. It makes me better and enriches our community. A rising tide raises all boats. Updating the ordinance will promote a healthy competitive environment and encourage economic growth. I will ask you to please vote for changes and encourage more entrepreneurs. Thank you for your service to the community. You're the best councilman ever.
No, I'm kidding. Wrong. We're gonna have to see that before we submit that into evidence, so. All right. And I just want to make something clear to council that I am showing respect to my colleagues. They were the ones who proposed this, so I think it is fair if they set the dollar amount as part of their proposal. If the council in our deliberations want to propose changing that amount, or how that is collected, that is up to the conversation. But I think it's fair to have a starting point that is issued by the people who actually brought it. So unless the council has an objection to that, that's the, going to be the motion that I that I have going forward. If it's okay with Councilman Jerrance and Peters, I will have you go down as the first and the second motion to bring this forward. So Councilman Jerrance, then Peters. And now I'll open up for council comments and questions. Councilman Jerrance.
So I'm gonna start this out with a story that started years ago. Living in Watertown, I have a chance to meet a lot of people from out of town, not only with business, but where I grew up and where I went to college. And a lot of them liked to come to Watertown for dinner at night. Let's just call it a date. And over the years, I've been asked the question, why is it so challenging? I mean, I know, you can get a restaurant that serves mashed potatoes and gravy and the the commercial, but but what do you have for an opportunity? What are the opportunities for a date, a different type of meal, something that's a little different? And, you know, I wasn't on the council, so I really didn't have an answer. Recently, I was, after a hockey game, I was out on the east side of town at a restaurant, and I was provided an opportunity to listen to what our charge was to add the ability to serve one or two drinks to a meal. And when I heard it was $100,000, I'm like, there's something wrong with that. That's a pretty good-sized barrier for not only a current business, but a new business, an entrepreneur who says, I'm gonna go to culinary school, I'm gonna move back to Watertown and become, and start a restaurant. And I'm like, wow, what can be done? So I called the City Hall, and I said, hey, will we do payments on the 100,000? Because for a new business, this is, this is heavy, especially if it's local-owned and it's a small entrepreneur. Nope, gotta have the 100,000 right up front. All right, I get it. So a few months ago, it motivated me to bring this up. I talked to a few council at that time. There wasn't, there wasn't a lot of, yes, we think the same, I will back it. That's okay. But when we had a new election, I asked the same question, and the answers were a lot more forthcoming and more positive, that this does have a chance. So, you know, we might think it's just for one person. We might not think it's for anyone. We might not believe that it's gonna draw another restaurant. You know, that type of stuff, we'll leave that up to the market. We'll meet, we'll leave the market out there to determine these types of answers for us. We don't need to know all the ins and outs. We don't need to know the particulars. We don't need to get involved in the in the little state, you know, the state statutes and the laws that prevent us really from making a lot of rules for this. We just need to get involved in the fee. So I put some numbers, and I thought, you know what, a business opens up, and if they can actually stand being open 365 days out of the year and sell 20 steaks or burgers each evening, what would they have to charge to break even on that $100,000? Well, that's 7,300 meals, and it's $10.27 each time all of us decide to go in there and get a meal at that restaurant. That's outrageous. I mean, that is, and you're like, well, do they have to charge? Where are they gonna get the money to cover that expense? Because being in business and following small business owners over the years, which are the heart of not only Watertown, of the whole country, I kept thinking, wow, can we do something? So that's where we're at today. I have a few more things that I could share, but but just a quick story, just to tell you where I'm coming from and why I brought this up. Go ahead, Mayor.
Any further comments, questions? Councilman Mormon?
I've had the opportunity to look into this since Councilman Jerrance brought this idea forward. And I put it out to Facebook, and I, the, what I've heard back from my constituents is they absolutely like the idea of the license getting more, becoming more affordable for the opportunity for more restaurants to maybe come into town, or people to open up more restaurants. I've also had the opportunity to talk to many rest, current restaurant owners and former bar restaurant owners here in Watertown. Every one of them that I talked to were not in favor of lowering the the fee, which I found interesting. But as I researched it more, it made a lot of sense. And basically, what I, what I put together real briefly, I'm just gonna read it, and we can go from there, or if nobody's interested, we just move on. There's four, in my opinion, there's four entities that this license price involves, four individual groups. The first one is the citizens of Watertown. They want restaurant options. They want opportunity to be entrepreneurs. And so that is the first entity that we're dealing with. The second one is the current establishment owners. They want their licenses and restaurants to retain the value and have that protection of the money that they've already invested, which I think everybody could understand that importance. The third is the future, future and potential restaurant owners that are concerned about the startup fees and risks. Having been a small business owner myself many years ago, and very, a very small business, it doesn't compare to opening up a restaurant, but I understand the fact of taking a look at all the numbers and saying, boy, can we make it? Or am I gonna really stick my neck out and hope I make it? But if I don't make it, I'm gonna be way far in debt and no business to show for it. So the third would be the future and potential restaurant owners. And the fourth entity that this all involves is the city themselves. The benefits that we can gain off of more business with sales tax revenue and the revenue we gain off of the price of these licenses. So when I take a look at all four of these, I have to ask myself the difficult question in this position of how do I appease everybody? Which is hard to find an answer to appease all four of these entities. What I'm gonna propose is just simply that. It's a proposal. It's something that if we're interested in pursuing and looking into more, we can go from there. But the first, first proposal I would make is instead of $100,000 for this license, I would propose that we would move it to $75,000. That helps the initial startup individual. It knocks $25,000 off of their initial expenses. The second one I would, the second part of this proposal would be, instead of having to have somebody come up with $75,000 right up front before you ever even open up the doors, if it's possible through state statute, if there's, if there's the ability to do so, I would say, take a $75,000 fee and spread it out over the first three years. First year, they would have to pay 25,000. The second year, they'd have to pay 25,000. The third year, they'd have to pay 25,000. And then after that, it would be the $1,500 that it is for the annual renewal. This provides an opportunity for a new business owner to not have to stick his neck out so far, and yet it still provides an opportunity for a city to gain revenue off of license fees and off of tax revenue. I don't, I don't feel real comfortable with dropping it all the way down to $25,000, because we have to protect also the current established owners. The ones that I've talked to have made it clear to me that they have great concern of losing that value in their restaurant just with the stroke of a pen. So this is just one idea that I want to throw out there. Maybe nobody's interested into, in it, but I feel it's so important to make sure we take, try as hard as we can as a council to take care of everybody. So with this proposal, it would be an opportunity where, yes, it would be cheaper, but it would still be a high enough price where it retains value for those that have already put so much money on the line and have businesses going currently. And it's an opportunity also for a startup to say, hey, I don't have to go way in debt as much to get started up. So with that, I'll just leave it at that, and we'll go from there.
Counsel, I apologize. I made a mistake in something. Normally, I don't have to take public testimony on any of these items, but as everyone who's ever watched me for four years knows, I do when people want to testify. I should have asked if there's anyone who wanted to testify at the beginning of this. I apologize for that, but I don't think any damage has been done. Councilman Mormon, I have your ideas written down. We can get to those, but I want to go to, just see if anyone does, anyone in the public would like to testify on this. Come on forward.
Just identify who you are, and if you represent someone.
And the microphone is on. The red light does signify it's on.
Okay, is this too loud?
No.
Okay, cool. So I'm Sean Dempsey. I own Dempsey's Brewery Pub and Restaurant and Danger Von Dempsey's here in Brook, sorry, in Brookings and also at the airport in Watertown. I tend to have a nervous, or sorry, I tend to have a habit of getting nervous and then talking as fast as humanly possible, so I'm going to try not to do that. So apologies if I do come off really, really, really quick speech. So, eh, I'm not gonna read that. I'm gonna try to be as frank as I can with this. I mean, I've been around for 26 years. My family started Dempsey's back when I was 13. I grew up in the industry. You know, and I've opened a few places myself. I've opened a store in Aberdeen, Danger Von Dempsey's. I've closed that store in February. I've got two other stores, the airport location, our Brookings location. So I've been in restaurants my entire life. I've traveled extensively with all of my other friends that also happen to own a bunch of restaurants around. And so I would just, just say, I've got some experience in that field. This, to me, like, I, the 25,000 is, to me, is just seems really, 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 really low for a chance for people to get their foot in the door. When we bought that liquor license back in 1999, it was 170. I think the current market value is about two and a quarter, if you're looking for for market pricing. And I think it's crazy that with the stroke of a pen, you could devalue something like that just overnight without any kind of reckoning. that just overnight without any kind of recompense or any kind of, any change except to, to help new restaurant owners. I mean, opening a restaurant's a nightmare. I can't, I can't say I would recommend it to anyone. But, no, it's tough. I'm, I'm, I'm open for seeing ideas. I'd like to see some talk and some more, some more studies done on what this is going to do because this, this is a genie in a bottle. The moment you encork that bottle and you let that out, I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be, my, 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 my understanding is that anyone can get a liquor license for 25,000 as long as they're doing 60/40. I'm not sure on the teeth in that, I'm not sure where you see, how you check to make sure a restaurant's doing that or not doing that. And I'm not really sure on, on just the value part. It just floors me that it'd be, when, when this was enacted in what, 2019, correct? For the original 100,000 liquor license?
The, and I will walk through right when you're done.
I appreciate that.
South Dakota codified law was changed in 2009 to allow for this. The city council approved a resolution at that time, then amended it in 2019.
Sure, thank you. Um, that, we went from what it should have, from a, from a $200,000 license to a $100,000 license. So I appreciate the idea of Bren's idea, sorry, Councilman Mormon's idea. Thanks for being my Facebook friend, by the way, for two days. It's great. But I, I appreciate the idea of having some kind of compromise in here to keep all of us other restaurants happy. There's 29 of us that own liquor licenses and by just dropping the price down that significantly, that deep is going to be, I would think it'd be a front to anyone that has a liquor license. I want to see other restaurants come to town. I like competition. Competition keeps us on our edge, it makes us better, but basically taking everybody who has a liquor license right now and just cutting their value down to frankly, almost nothing is just, 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 I don't feel appreciated about it. I feel it's very disrespectful to every other establishment who's been here, you know, every mom and pop that's worked there. I was going to say something else, sorry. Who's worked really, really hard to be here to sustain this long, or, or just to even be around long enough to sustain is just, it's a lot and it just doesn't seem very faithful to the people who have already put our blood, sweat and tears into this community to make it better by doing things like this. You know, do I think you need to have a liquor license to be successful? No, I don't think you do. I think that as a restaurateur, we plot everything out, we figure ways to make things work. Do I just think it helps? I, I think it absolutely helps. But I think that it's something we work around if we do have and we work, or sorry, we work around if we don't have. If I could buy one for 25, yeah, sure, who, I would buy one, who wouldn't? But, you know, my, my big question of the entire thing would be, you know, how many of these are there going to be around? Is this going to be an unlimited number? What's the teeth going to be in the measure? What happens if someone's fudging the books or someone says, hey, I'm selling, you know, a burger but calling it beer? What, what happens if, and then how do you, how do you even check? And I don't mean to sound paranoid on it, I just, if we're going to lose that much value in our, in our own license, I'd just like to see some more details and I'd like to see a really clear plan of how this is going to work, when it's going to be implemented, how many they're going to be. And if it's unlimited, then, I mean, like if we're trying to get more restaurants in town, why don't we just give them the liquor license? That draws some people in for sure, you know, and that's, sorry, that's frustrating for me. But that's, that is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Do you have a question for Mr. Dempsey? Could you wait until after I see if there's any other public testimony?
Sure.
Is there any other public testimony? Just come on forward and say who you represent and, yeah, just step back, Mr. Dempsey, if you would.
I am Tom Bolt. I own Cloud Nine out there, Lone Pine, and I just previously purchased Dakota Butcher over there. And obviously, we got liquor at Lone Pine and Cloud Nine, we do not have it at Dakota Butcher. That is my, that's what I'd love to get, it helps us out a lot. Obviously, I know I've been in the business for years now. Liquor's a huge asset. This license isn't the same license that we got out there. This is a whole different can of worms here. This license, I mean, it's got no equity in it, you never own it, you can't sell it, you got to be 60% food, you got to, you can't ever use, like, our licenses, we use for the special event licenses at both Lone Pine and Cloud Nine. I mean, there's, you can't do any of that with it. You know, there's not a, there's not a gambling license with this. I mean, that's huge, that's with the other licenses. You look back when you guys lowered this license back in 2019 to $100,000, what has the value of the license have done? They've went up. I keep a pretty good eye on the liquor license because I've been looking for one to buy, so I had one for a different business. You can't buy a liquor license right now and if you are, they're going to be around that $230,000. You know, back in 2019, what were they worth? 170. Now they're worth 230, so obviously, it didn't affect it much, you know, and I just think to try to make a successful business, obviously, like Sean said, he had to close his business. The restaurant business is not an easy business to be in, the food costs are outrageous, trying to find cooks, trying to find servers, trying to find help, it's, I got three of them, trust me, I know, we, we deal with it all the time. And, you know, just try to get this, you know, to get this passed and get, get this in, over on my other restaurant would be huge to, you know, we're just a steakhouse out there. It's not like we're a downtown restaurant, we're going to be open till 2:00 in the morning. 90% of the time, we're closed at, by 11 o'clock at night, maybe on some hockey nights, might be a little different because we're right next to the arena over there and I lose a lot of customers that say they don't go there because we don't have liquor. They don't, you know, they, they don't, they want to come and eat there, but if you don't have liquor, they don't stop there. I think it'd be a great idea to get this drop lower down. I mean, it's $25,000 mark, I mean, that'd be great, but anything's better than nothing, you know, and I think 75, I think is still a little high myself. I'd like, you know, to spread it out, that, that, that helps out a lot too. I mean, I'm the one that said, you know, okay, 100,000, can we make a payment plan on that? Can we pay so much a year? You know, I don't know if that's even possible, I have no clue, you know? But being in the restaurant business, not having liquor, it's tough. You know, I've never done it, I've never, I mean, until this, my first one, I've had it out liquor and I can see the difference, Lone Pine, Cloud Nine, Dakota Butcher, the numbers are, they're huge, you wouldn't even have any idea, you know, and then you talk about, okay, this license doesn't have a lottery license with it. I got lottery license with my other two licenses. You guys would be surprised how much money that lottery brings in. That, I mean, that usually makes a payment on the license or the, your rent payment or whatever else. But I just ask you guys to lower it, it would help us out tremendously keeping that, keeping that restaurant up and running. It's, it's tough business right now in the restaurant industry. I mean, as you, you look at Sioux Falls, how many restaurants have closed down there? I think five, six closed in the last year. You know, I'm not saying that's comparable to Watertown, but I mean, overall, it's a tough business. And I guess that's all I got, unless somebody's got any questions.
Thank you. And we can have you stand by in case there are any questions. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, I'll close public testimony. I'm going to just say that I am keeping track, so we have an original motion at 25,000. We have a proposal, not an actual motion, we actually have two proposals, neither one is an official motion yet. I am going to ask for councils, I think that through the discussion that we might be having, some of this might be resolved through our conversation, so I don't want to take a specific motion before its time. I want to encourage conversation and maybe that leads us to, whether it be the price point or something else. So Councilman Allen, you had something?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a lot of questions and one I was thinking of asking Sean was about, what is your split? Would you, could you do, is it a 60/40 split or not?
Are you talking for my current license?
Yes.
My current license is a full liquor license, so I don't have, I wouldn't worry about a split.
Right, so do you have a rough idea?
I, I would say right now for my current split, it's about 75/25. I'd say we do a lot of food, but it's mostly if you're getting, if you're getting a Jack Coke or you're getting a couple beers, I mean, you're having dinner with it except for, of course, those few barflies we get.
Yeah, so it's, it's, right now, you could, if you had this permit instead of your license, you could probably stay within the parameters of it?
Potentially, but we also do a lot of transfer events, but I mean, that's your TNLs, your camel races, but those things don't mount up to a lot, I should say.
Right. The, the reason I ask the question is because, and I, I looked to Allen maybe to answer this, we currently don't have any full liquor license available for sale, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the only way for someone currently to sell liquor in their restaurant would be to get this permit, there's no other option?
That is correct.
Yeah. So, you know, the reason I ask that is that it, the, the conversation about the value of the license that both you and Tom addressed being worth maybe 230 or whatever, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Tom, did you try and purchase a full liquor license and, and got outbid?
I tried looking for one and I've dealt with somebody I've known, but I've never been able to find one. I mean, I've been looking around for a couple of years now, you know, I've looked, but there's none, there's really none out there to even buy, you know, nobody's going to let them go at 230,000 or 200,000. You know, a lot of these people that bought these liquor licenses years ago, when they paid 150 for them, you know, and I've looked around, tried to get one from over there, done some research on that, and there's, there's nothing available.
Right. And I, I, I understand the difference in the two licenses, that, that that full liquor license gives you the video lottery options, it gives you transferability, it gives you all kinds of things that add value to your business. This permit doesn't carry those things with it. And so to me, it's maybe, it's not worth as much. Is, is that, would you say that's a correct way to look at it or not? Sean?
I would agree a little bit on that. I mean, it's more the $25,000 price range, I think is a little, is, is really lean, but I also think that, shoot. Damn it, Tom, I had something to say. It was good too. It was really good, man.
I trust it'll come back to you.
Probably about 2:00 this morning when I'm laying in bed. Yeah, I'd say, I think, I mean, like, they're not going to be the same license, it's more the, like, I'm not worried if, if Tom gets a liquor license for, for that, that's fine. I'm not worried so much about that. It's going to be what happens when, you know, I've like, like, let's say in 20 years, I don't have any children, in 20 years, I retire, you know, and I've got my liquor license that we've been investing in for so long, who's going to even pay 150 for a liquor license when they're, you know, when they're only going for 25? I mean, maybe a casino, maybe a bar, if someone's opened a full-fledged bar, but if it's a restaurant 60/40, that's going to be tough. I mean, I'd be, I mean, like, if you did something along the lines of that, closer to that, 75, hell, even closer to 50 or 60, it'd be fine with me with some kind of provision and I just would like to see a cap on how many are going to be, or if it's going to be unlimited.
Yeah. It's just, it appears to me, I mean, we've never sold one at the $100,000 price and we didn't sell one previously at the 209,000 before we changed it to the 100,000 in 2019. So it seems like from a market perspective, people look at the license and they go, eh, for that kind of money, it's not worth it. You know, in other words, you know, I might as well spend another 100,000 if I can and get a full liquor license because it affords me the portability and some of the other, you know, the video lottery and some of those things that are obviously worth some money. And so I, I don't, you know, I guess what I'm struggling with is, let's say we have two restaurants that come in that, you know, get this permit for whatever price we end up saying, I mean, is that going to measurably hurt the value of the license that you hold, which gives you additional options? I mean, I, Tom, obviously, you're thinking, well, I, I want to get this license here, it's my only option, I want to serve mixed drinks, but you don't think it's going to hurt Cloud Nine or you don't think it's going to hurt Lone Pine in terms of the value of what you've put into that license already? I don't know, maybe you're thinking, I mean, I just don't know, it doesn't make sense to me if I had a full liquor license that I'd paid for, that I had as an asset, that I can sell and so forth, that I would say, you know, I think I'm going to get rid of that and get a permit that doesn't provide me with the same kinds of benefits. I just don't see people making that decision very easily. Most business people I wouldn't think would do that, even though it's a lot cheaper if we make a decision to do 25 or 50 or 75 over three years or whatever we do. And that's another question that I have for Allen is really, is that an option? You know, can we do something where we would say, it's 75,000, but you can pay for it over three years? Is that possible even?
City Manager Steger?
We have, the city attorney and the chief financial officer and I have had a brief conversation on it. The license fee itself, we believe, would have to be set at the initial fee in year one. Essentially, what we would be doing as a city is doing a financing transaction where the city would be an unsecured creditor in somebody's license. I don't know if that's permissible under state law, we've got some more work to do.
And Councilman Allen, are you done for right now?
Oh, I am done. I really appreciate the insight both of you guys brought, appreciate it.
Okay, to further cloud these waters of discussion, I'm just going to tell everybody on the council where, what I am going to propose is to look at this in a work session for two reasons. Number one is what City Manager Steger just said. There are good proposals out here. This proposal of staggering in a somewhat lower cost, let's say three years at 70, three years of 25,000, got at least some approval or at least, Mr. Bolt was at least open to discussing that possibility. I'm not sure that that's where the price point would set, maybe it's two years at 25,000, maybe it's three at 20, I don't know. But we can't even really propose that as an alternative until we know for, for fact whether or not it is permissible by state law. So I think to really write a good ordinance, we need to do some more research on this. And one of those is if we did explore an alternate funding or an alternate fees, fee structure, is that permissible? If so, what are the restrictions? I'll give you another huge reason why I think a work session would be advisable is just listening to Mr. Bolt and Mr. Dempsey, these two are not in that much opposition with each other. There's at least an opening here for a compromise and I think that there is, I think that there are others in this community that would explore that because they can see the, the benefit that this proposal can bring, but that just looking at only the fee is probably not the right way. It, it might be too restrictive because there are implications that could be faced. I'll give you some other examples. I did a little bit of research into the original law. So if you go to 35-4-118 in South Dakota codified law, it basically says that if someone wants to buy a restaurant liquor license, concurrent with this, they have to first try to sell any liquor license for sale. Now currently, we don't have one. However, there is nothing stopping Mr. Dempsey from tomorrow saying his license is for sale. He could say, my license is for sale and still operate it, I think, I don't know that for certain, but what would stop all, I think that there's like 19 restaurant liquor licenses in town. What would stop all 19 of them from saying, my license is for sale? But by South Dakota codified law, if you wanted a restaurant liquor license, we as a city cannot even sell one until you first purchase any liquor license that is already up for sale. We can't preempt state law, so we at least need to figure that out. We could be passing an ordinance that has absolutely no bearing and would never happen because tomorrow, we could have 19 liquor licenses up for sale. We don't know that. And that's one of those things that I learned in six years to take a little bit of time to look at the ordinance. Couple other things that, and I could leave it at that, but I am concerned, I think that it would be wise to find out exactly what the penalty violation would be. I'm not saying anyone would, I definitely am not saying Mr. Bolt would because he's got two fine establishments that I like very much here in town, but what's to say? What's, what's the enforcement mechanism if there is a bad actor out there who either signs a false affidavit? What if the affidavit vouching that they sold more than 60% in food was a mistake? Maybe it was, maybe it was like razor thin, 60.1% was food and they sign it and then they actually do like an audit and they say, oh, that's wrong. What's the enforcement? Did they just lose their license? What if they're purposely fudging numbers? We don't know any of that. I think a very quick call down to Sioux Falls and Rapid City, Aberdeen and Brookings to find out how they did enforcement, if there has been any violations, could get us a long way in providing some assurance that we would be doing the right thing here. The price point is one thing. I, I'm not sure 25,000 is, I'm not sure that's the price point that we need to be at, but I'm not, I, I am open to the idea that $100,000 is too much, but where is that mark? Where is that market? Because I haven't heard anyone to say that $100,000 is the, that's too much, so I'm not going to ever do a restaurant at 100,000, but I will do for 50,000. And if that's the price point, then that's what we should set it at. Or maybe not, that's open for discussion. So there's a few things. So there's a few things, and, uh, one of the other reasons why I would say that, uh, a little bit of a wait is not a bad idea is, um, the person on staff who deals with most of our liquor licenses and would answer this is Jennifer Collins, and she's gone this week. So some of these questions, I, I just think, I think we could write a better ordinance and possibly reach a compromise if we just waited a little bit. But that's going to be my proposal, but you can vote me down, too. So, anyway, those are the concerns that I had. If we, those are the concerns that I had, and I think that we can get past my reservations, just as we can get past other people's reservations. So, Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a brief conversation here a few weeks back at a council meeting, and I say brief because one councilman had to leave early, and so we didn't get a whole lot of discussion involved in that. Tonight, we're having a little more discussion. We're having, you know, two establishments here this evening, and I appreciate your input. My challenge on this is, is to that, this point that the mayor just mentioned was the process to get to this decision. There's questions that have been asked tonight that I don't know if we really got to, got an answer to, um, on, on both sides of this, pending them. I mean, myself, coming here this evening, I didn't show up this evening with a, um, a yes or a no. I showed up this evening more on a, I'm paying attention. I've made some phone calls, I've talked with some establishment owners. Some have reached out to me, just like other councilmen, and that's, that's great, we need to do our homework. But it's, seems like this has been more done behind the scenes than it has been out in the public and really having a, a good candid conversation. It is tonight a little bit more so, but we still don't have, there's still more detail to this. There's some more answers. And I'm not meaning we gotta talk this thing to death, but on, on an ordinance like this, or this fee schedule and how to work through this, personally, I am with, with the mayor and maybe some others on, on making sure we really properly vet this out, get discussion. And the more we do this in the public and have more entities involved, maybe invite more, more establishments here so we can really work through the pros and cons, it may actually work out to where we kind of all maybe come to some sort of an agreement. I mean, that might be wishful thinking, but better than right now, it just seems like this is just kind of, it appears, doesn't mean it is, but it almost appears like it's being kind of just railroaded down right through, let's get this done, let's get this fee down. And, you know, I, I have one question, for example, that I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but, um, you know, for example, the doll, the cost that it takes to start up a restaurant. If the liquor license is at twenty-five thousand or a hundred thousand, that's a big difference. But I have a feeling when it comes to opening up a restaurant, it's a pretty big ticket item, and there's a lot of things involved. Does the liquor license fee move the needle as far as opening, opening a restaurant in town? In fact, there's restaurants that have opened up without liquor, so obviously they're able to do it without liquor. Does, does the fee move the needle to where that, you know, it, it makes or breaks the restaurant starting out? I've had the same thoughts as Councilman Mormon as far as the payment plan. You know, are there some creative things we can do as a city? There might be challenges with that. But again, all this discussion tonight, conver, you know, these questions and some of my own thoughts, I just currently don't have a piece about making a decision tonight. If, if I was forced to make a decision tonight, it probably would be a no. I guess I'd say, for the fact of, have, I just, there's just unanswered questions that, that, for example, today, the mayor finding out about the state statute. That we should, that does come into play a little bit. I did do some, some other research I did, I found out from some communities within the city here I called today, and, and their, 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 their penalty fee for having a restaurant license, I think it's Councilman Jerns called it, Huron, seventy-five thousand dollars, Yankton, seventy thousand dollars, Vermillion, ninety-five thousand dollars, Brookings, one hundred thousand dollars, Aberdeen, one hundred thousand dollars, Sioux Falls, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, Mitchell, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So this is where others, now, the, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, do we use that to, to, to make a decision tonight? I'm just kind of stating dollars where they're at. For example, one community did say that the, their dollar amount was set somewhere around in two thousand and eighteen or somewhere in there, and it was based at the time of their particular liquor license. They kind of had it around the, the private owners of liquor license. Now, they're, that price has gone up since then. But obviously, other communities have thought about the, and Watertown as well, we have, that's why we had our price where it's at, I believe with other councilmen, past councilmen before us, was probably took into consideration the privately owned liquor license, even though there's a separation that's been discussed as far as it's an asset and all that. But, but is there more to that? Are we looking at it from every perspective? Have we properly seen every angle and had every question asked, or are we just kinda, just, oh, let's get this price thing, yes or no? Uh, I don't, I don't know which way it's gonna go tonight, but, uh, I think it'd be better for all of us if we just, even for the ones who are forward or against it, that we took the time to really make sure it was done right. So that's where I'm at with this. That's just, uh, I guess my input.
Everyone has had a chance to speak. I'm just going to recap where we're at. The original motion is to pass the resolution as is with the fee of twenty-five thousand dollars. There has been no official alternate motion or substitute motion, but I believe Council Mormon was touching upon two. One, setting the fee at seventy-five thousand dollars, and one, setting it at three years at twenty-five thousand dollars for the first three years. Under both of those motions, the only thing for discrepancy is the fee, not the rest of the resolution. The rest of the resolution would pass, it would only be the fee that we would be discussing. Uh, that is the substitute motion. And then you have my proposal, which really is not one, I, I would just be asking for a postponement until after a work session. So we'd be looking at either the first or second meeting in September, probably to, in order to have a work session where we can get all of our questions asked, get answers back, get them to the point where we can write an ordinance. Those would be the motions. However, I think now would be a good time to go back to my colleague, Councilman Jerns, just for you. I mean, you've heard a lot of other councilmen say things, so I think that it's fair to go back to you.
Well, thanks, Mayor. You know, if we wait to change things in this country and in this city to have every answer, it's never gonna get changed. That's my first comment, and it's not negative, it's not against, because sometimes, sometimes things just need to be vetted out. There were some other comments made, payments, um, you know, um, the state statute pretty much, um, tells us what we can and can't do. It does allow us to set it at a minimum of what our previous census was, and is what Sioux Falls is likely did because it's a hundred and ninety-two thousand, which would have been their census the last time. So, I mean, there's not a lot, really, that we can do. My questions would go back to, um, uh, to Tom and, and Sean. Sean, um, I think a lot of the confusion in, in the community, and, and I watched some of the conversation on Facebook, it really comes back to the differences, um, the ownership side of it. And we talked about selling a license. We're not selling a license. It's not a sold asset. It's not a buying asset. It is a fee, a one-time fee, and then a renewal fee, of course, fifteen hundred dollars a year after that, where the license that someone like Sean is holding has an asset value. And the chances of having a small number, which you may, we may be able to argue what a small number is, of, of the value of that going to zero is pretty much, um, probably not, not really possible. Is anything possible in the world of the market? Yeah. Everybody could just go broke and shut the lights off. But in the world of booze, that doesn't really happen. There's one thing in every little town around here that survives, and that's the bar downtown. Because we needed a place to go play pinball, pool, and have a beer. So it really, my question is, and my question for an hour and a half conversation with another downtown bar owner the other day, really had to do with comparing these apples and oranges, and I know that's an old analogy, apples and oranges. But to the restaurant person who has all of these restrictions and who is paying a fee upfront, that's a different license as we've all kind of talked about tonight. And, and I asked him, I go, it, it, because his concern was the same as yours, and thanks for at least having the balls to get up and talk about this. Because a lot of people, it's hard.
Show up, by the way.
It's hard. It's really hard. And, and I started speeding up, too, after I started chatting. But, you know, I asked him, I go, um, where's our evidence that the value of your liquor license is actually gonna go down at all? Because according to a recent negotiation, um, and I believe Tom could talk about it if he chooses to, he doesn't need to, but it went into a bidding process to get that license. And that's hard. I mean, that's hard because a restaurant is now competing against the ability to have video lottery. And Tom mentioned some, some things with video lottery, so I don't need to mention that. But that's a, a fairly good place, um, to, to help pay for a liquor license. They conserve drinks, they can transfer it to the street dance, they can transfer it to, where we have one going to the rodeo grounds next. There's a lot of things. I know it's not a windfall of money, and it's still challenging. But in the end of all of this, if you wanna use it as an investment, which I think is a great one, I wish I'd have done this a few years ago, there, there's not, there's not really a lot that's gonna harm your investment, in my view. So is there any evidence in that, that we have, or is it just, we have some anxiety of what could happen? Is there any evidence that the liquor license would actually go down? I mean, is there any real way of determining that?
Personally, I would just go with the supply and demand argument. I mean, the moment you enlist, as I said, the X amount of licenses, which we don't even have a number on right now. I mean, if you had ten more licenses for twenty-five, and we bring hypothetically ten new restaurants in, cool, I like competition. Do I want to drive out every mom and pop shop because we sold out a bunch of licenses to bring people in? I think that would devalue it pretty quick. And personally, I also think that, like, as I said, let's say that I, I mean, like, I, we have the liquor license to sell liquor. You know, we've had it for a long time, and it's, it has given us an advantage, an advantage we planned for. Years and years back, we factored in, we broke the ba, we broke the bank to make it work, but we made it work. And, you know, I mean, I just don't expect to see that value to sustain. And even if it's not all about value, it's still just, one day, this value was this, and the next day it's this. And in my opinion, because it's gonna be, I mean, why would you buy a liquor license for two hundred and some grand, or even a hundred and fifty grand, wherever that market is, when you can get one from the city for twenty-five K to do basically the same thing? What restaurant would wanna own one to transfer to another event? Those things are, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot to do those outside events. So I can't think that's gonna be a very desirable factor, too many people that wanna, you know, do that, so. Yeah, I just, I, I think the normal supply and demand argument, personally, I mean, like, like, but I mean, I, I run restaurants, I don't know much else besides that.
Mayor, you mind? So I don't know if anyone else was in here when his dad, Bill, started that. Mayor, you were. Yeah, he put his life, I mean, he put his life savings on the line to start that. I remember that. We were there. We were doing what we could as lines clubs to support him and have things there. Yeah, and, and the other liquor license owner that, and, and bar owner that I talked, talked to said, I poured a lot of concrete, Lynn, to be able to afford that a hundred and seventy thousand dollar license. Come on, really? Can you feel for us? Yeah, I can. I can hear ya. I can, I can see it. But I said, I believe, rather than viewing that your liquor license value's gonna go down, I believe it's either gonna stay the same or even get better. Because I believe the right restaurants, and again, back to supply and demand, we don't know what all those numbers are. We can go back to every economics course that you and I had in, in school and college, and there, there's too many assumptions, and all, all of them make that. But I could also argue, and I did with him a little bit on this, that we are going to bring additional people to downtown Watertown, and they don't, or to the ice rink area, or to other areas of the town, and they don't always just stay in one place. They move around. Hey, let's go have a drink. We don't wanna go home yet. The, the couple that we're with, they wanna go stop down to, uh, the example I heard the other day, Duffy's, Doc's, Dempsey's, I mean, they, they, they go around to the different places. They don't wanna go home yet at, at nine o'clock. So we could also argue that it is going to also help all areas of Watertown. And if we get people in town, that's a good thing for everyone. So my other question for Tom is, has to do with, um, you being outbid for the possibility to get a liquor license. Is, is that something that you would share? I mean, it's not a big thing, but I mean...
No, it's something I probably wouldn't share, because I'd, yeah.
But you alluded to it, that you did, did attempt to get one.
We tried, I've tried a couple of them I got outbid on.
Yes, okay.
But, I mean, you look at the, look at, look what happened to two thousand and nineteen, you guys lowered this, and everybody was worried, and then I was at the meeting.
Oh, you were when?
I was at the meeting in two thousand and nineteen when they lowered it. And, uh, what has happened since then? They haven't went down on price, not one bit. They went up on price.
There's a difference in a hundred and twenty-five.
You're right, there's a difference, but a hundred and twenty-five, but you're getting, you're pretty much, they're just giving you a permit to serve liquors, what they're doing here. They're not giving you, I mean, I, he said it, that, we do a ton of events. I mean, I do, we do seven, eight events a year. Well, eight's our max between both my restaurants I can do to get that license. We've done many out at the Extension Building. We do well on those. You know, that's a benefit to having them licensed. Would I do any with them? Buy a license for either of those? No, I wouldn't, because I need that license for my video lottery, I need it for my off, uh, off-campus events. We do stable waters, we're out there doing weddings, we're out at the Extension Building, doing weddings nonstop, and they, they're good money for us. You know, we're doing one out at Harley-Davidson this Friday. Brings in good money. That's, that's why I keep them licenses, that's why everybody else would keep those licenses. And over the years since two thousand and nineteen, the value in these liquor licenses has not went down one bit, it's went up. I keep a pretty good eye on it. If there was one available, yeah, I, I'd go buy it in a heartbeat. I mean, it's an asset to me. I don't think it's ever gonna lose value. I mean, you can use it about anywhere, any place, you can't, you know, these ones, you can't transfer it, you can't take it with you when you leave. If I buy this license and it closes, I close my restaurant a year, guess what? I'm out that money. You know, to be out twenty-five thousand, yeah, well, wash it off. To be out a hundred thousand, that's huge. It's a lot of money, for me anyways, I guess, but...
So I'd just like to finish up if possible. So really getting back to the supply and demand, um, in, when we look at the market and its availability for new restaurants to move in, it's not like we're gonna get fifteen restaurants in the next two years. There just isn't room for that.
It's impossible.
As hard as it is, and you, I, I wrote down your, your public comment, as hard as it is to start one of these and keep them going, that is not gonna happen. That's rolling the dice, and you know what? There's a few people gonna do that, but, uh, I don't know. Anyway, uh, so I did some quick math because I, I got Dubrick math in, in my head. And, and, you know, I started looking at the seventy-five thousand, can we do payments? I like the ideas. But in the first year, you're still adding seven dollars and eighty-one cents to every meal. If I'm a restaurant owner in town and I'm calling a councilman on this, and I'm, I'm looking at that, I'm going, yeah, charge them the seven dollars and eighty-one cents because I don't want my restaurant to have to improve and be better. That's what this is about. It's, it, it is a barrier. And I'm cool if we need to delay and we need to do some more, you know, that's, that's okay. But I believe this is excellent discussion. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me get out a, a few of my comments and my thoughts that I've had about this. But I'm just, uh, going down here through, uh, my notes and, uh, you know, I'm never gonna say it all, because at two o'clock in the morning, I'll probably have the same issue as Sean.
Call me.
City Attorney Kerikoff.
Sorry, you, there was comments going around, and I actually was like, is that true? And so I had to look it up. If I'm reading this correctly, and I'm not saying I am right off the cuff here, I'm doing this online, but the on-sale retail restaurant licenses can transfer them for special events. The ones that we would be issuing under this license, because some of them said that they couldn't. Now, I might do more research and find another statute that says, here's the caveat, but you can do that. I just thought you guys should know that, since you were talking about that was somehow a limitation. The video lottery, absolutely, they cannot have. The video lottery, absolutely, they cannot have. They would have to get a beer wine license that allowed for the video lottery, but all, those are capped and those have all been, they'd have to find a seller. So that part we don't have to worry about. Thank you.
City Attorney Kerikoff, as long as I'm, you were clarifying one thing, I'd like you to clarify one other thing. I was just doing some, looking at this. With one abstention on the city council, we have an even number of members, so we have the potential of a tie vote. If it is a tie vote, then no one is on the prevailing side and no motion to reconsider or renew would be valid at that point. So we can't do a motion to reconsider. Obviously, another councilman could make a proposal in the future sometime with a second from another councilman. But, um, what I was wondering is, I'm not sure I want to close the debate because if we go forward with the 25,000 as the resolution and that does not get a majority vote, then it's over. This discussion is over. We move on. There's no, there's no substitute motions. There's no alternate motions. There's no reconsideration. It's over by Robert's rules. What I'm wondering is, is there a way to separate the discussion of 25,000 from the rest of the resolution? I don't see that there is. Cause that's what I'm wondering because can we vote on the 25,000 as separate from the rest of the resolution?
The rest of the resolution would just be that you're entertaining changing the fee. You could put in the resolution that the fee is to be set by council, but then you'd still have to do a resolution to set the fee.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, given, and I don't know how it's going to happen, I just want to make sure that we, that everyone knows ahead of time how I'm going to look at this. Unless someone on council disagrees, I'm going to use my power as the chair to say that if it ends in a tie vote, that is just basically saying council would like to find a better, would like to discuss a separate price point. If the rest of the body agrees with that, now it, 25,000 could pass. And then the, then the resolution passes and it moves on and we're done. If it doesn't pass, if it fails, then it's also done, over with. If it ends in a tie, then I'm, then I am going to interpret it as council is not ready for it to die, nor to pass, but just wants to discuss the possible fee and possible other endings of it. Councilman Jerns?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, would this be able to be brought up in two weeks, four weeks if it fails or ties?
I think it could. Yeah. I am not aware of anything in our Home Rule Charter that prevents a councilman from bringing up, uh, the same proposal multiple times or in various forms.
Correct, and we don't have, you know, unlike, we are unlike planning and zoning where we don't have to have a waiting period to bring it up again. Um, and if I may, Mayor, one other point, because I know Councilman Allen had made a comment and I just want to make sure everybody understands how it works. Um, when it came to, as an example, let's say, and we'll, we'll pick on Sean because Sean's here. So Sean says, all right, well, I don't need the video lottery anymore, you know, for whatever. He could say, I'm going to get the 25,000 retail. I'm going to sell mine. But to go to Councilman Ellen's point of like, they don't want to give it up necessarily, is most people that own a liquor license, they sell it almost as if they're the bank and they retain a security interest in it. So they continue to, you know, at least have an interest. They're almost like loaning them the money and they're paying them for the fee or for the license. So that's usually how they set them up. So there are situations where they'll sell them and they're basically the bank because you are allowed under, uh, state statute to retain a security interest in the license. I just want to be clear on that.
Okay. So Councilman Jerns?
I would move to table this for two weeks.
We can postpone. Um, we have a motion to postpone until the first council meeting in September. Is that okay? And seconded by Councilman Peters. We, we do have, so this is going to be a substitute motion. So a substitute motion.
Yes.
Made by Councilman Jerns, seconded by Councilman Peters to postpone consideration until the first meeting in September. Any discussion on that? Councilman Shuddy?
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. What I would not like to see is being on the, I mean, yes, be on the phone and talk with people, but I don't want this vetted behind the scenes like it's kind of been, today was, tonight was nice. We talked about it some. But what, what does this mean in two weeks? Are we just going to talk with more people behind the scenes and then come here and talk about a dollar amount again? Or is it more advantageous as a community if we get together and have invite other parties involved, other entities that maybe are not in this environment, maybe more of a, in another, you know, another facility of, of the community where we can, like a roundtable discussion and get the pros and cons, have some of these questions answered that even the last little nugget that City Attorney Kerikoff brought up about transferring. Just coming back in two weeks to have the same conversation again, I don't think does the city well versus, let's talk about it. Let's, let's get these pros and cons. Let's get all this information out and maybe more people will buy into this, this way as well, whichever way we go. So that's just where I'm at with that particular motion.
I, and I don't want to speak for Councilman Jerns, so I won't, but I guess from my perspective, being the one who suggested a work session, I would say whether or not we make it an official work session, let's take it up as a council. We can do a, we can do a meeting similar to what we did with mobile vendors where we declared that a quorum might be present. I think that a lot of us would be interested in showing up, but we could also just have a straight up work session.
We do, we do have some additional work session topics. And so I would put out that, uh, we could do a work session on August 25th. Or we, we could defer action and do a work session on September 8th with action then being the, I think, 15th of September.
I'll leave that up to Councilman Jerns as far as the timing goes. I, yeah, and we can decide that later too. We can just say postpone to date uncertain.
Date to be determined?
Yeah. You can actually make postpone to date uncertain, but I think this is out in public. I think all of us are testifying in favor of coming up with something. And I would agree with Councilman Shuddy. I, we're not going to have the same conversation again. We're going to have a more constructive conversation based upon some answers from the questions that people had. Councilman Jerns?
I believe he didn't mean this, but there really hasn't been any backdoor talk. I mean, whatever we're talking about tonight is what's been talked about in the community. Uh, there, there's no one hiding anything, but I think, um, Councilman Shuddy's suggestion uh, to have further conversation, conversation in the public is, is a good idea.
Councilman Mormon, did you have something?
I was just going to say too, that I think it'd be very good to, um, have a little more discussion on it. Just because there are some, there's some state statute stuff that we need to, that were brought up tonight and that we need to look into, um, all our, all our options and to make sure we are, uh, doing everything within what the state of South Dakota's laws allow us to do. And if there's questions on what we can and can't do, we definitely need to get them, get those answered before, uh, we would make a vote. So I guess I appreciate the opportunity to do a little bit more discussion on it. At the same time, I also understand the sense of urgency because we have business owners that want to get rolling and we have, uh, fall sports coming up that might have impacted their business. So I also understand the importance of, you know, let's get this decision made so we can keep moving forward with business.
Councilman Shuddy?
Uh, yes, and yes, so thank you, Mr. Jerns, for clarifying that. I wasn't referring to backdoor dealings, more just, we've had, probably all have had some good conversations with folks that we've shared, but let's get them in the room together and let's talk through this. Let's actually get together and talk instead of just, we're, we're just repeating what we've been told by, by others. Let's get it more talking together as a community, the entities involved, the parties involved. And, and again, I'm not trying to say, let's just talk this to death. I'm saying we, just more community involvement and working through the process. So with one meeting like that, and then yes, maybe we got some answers we can get to.
Thank you. And I'll just comment, I thank my good friend and colleague from Ward E for bringing this forward. It's a good conversation. It does deserve to be had because there are a lot of people who want what this is aimed to accomplish. My concern is just the language in the ordinance. What is set up is incredibly important because you ha, you have to do it right the first time. I've seen a lot of bad laws passed in my time that take a lot more work after the fact. And I think that we can come up with something, something that could work and that would be my goal. So I thank you for being open to that idea. Uh, because I would, I would echo Councilman Shuddy's sentiment. If you forced me to vote tonight, it would be a no, but I don't want it to be a no. I want to find a way to get to yes. And I think that's what Councilman Mormon also referred to, which is, is there a way where we can get some compromise and, and people agreeing? It is a contentious issue. The thing is with liquor laws in South Dakota, in a way Watertown is a pawn in a game that has been going on since the prohibition days of South Dakota because most of our laws in this state are still in place from prohibition days. They're archaic, they're expensive, they're convoluted. They can be very difficult to deal with. That's why, that's one of the reasons why the state has been slow in moving and one of the reasons why I think that we need to be slow in, you know, at least our consideration. It's not easy to change it if, you know, at, at a state level, I know that there's been conversations that the best thing to do would be to wipe it all clean and start over again. But there are too many people with personal investments of a lot of money in that. And then you start getting into distributorships and proprietary owners and it, there's a reason why it doesn't happen at a state level and there's a reason why I don't think it's a bad idea if Watertown waits a few weeks before we pass something that changes it. So I thank you for being open to that consideration. Any further comments? So the motion will be to postpone until a date uncertain. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Finance Officer Rob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Mormon?
So an aye vote is to wait?
To postpone.
To postpone.
To postpone. Okay, yeah, so aye.
Okay, Jerns?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Hoyer? Oh, recue, sorry, forgot that. Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. We'll, we will have that back sometime in September.
Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you both to Mr. Bolt and Mr. Dempsey. We're moving on to item 12B, but we are going to be taking up B, C, and D in one conversation because they're all very similar, but we will be voting on each of them separately. For discussions on item 12B, C, and D, we'll go to City Manager Steger.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, all three of these items are related to developments that have been in process for the last several years. Our process of accepting the infrastructure put in place by developers has evolved in the last, uh, last couple of years and we really go through, through two steps. The first one is a certificate of completion, which is issued upon the completion of the development and an inspection by our engineering staff. That then triggers the start of a one-year warranty period. At the conclusion of the one-year warranty period, staff then visits the development again and notes any issues that need to be resolved. And upon the, the conclusion of the resolution of any issues, we then have a proposal to create a certificate of acceptance. And that's where we are at on these three developments is the warranty period has, has lapsed for the one-year period that the developer has to remedy any issues that come, come up in that issue in, in that period. And the engineering staff has re-inspected each of these developments. And tonight we recommend, uh, issuing a, uh, acceptance of each of these three developments. The first one before you is Prairie Haven Second Edition. Um, the developer has, has completed all of the requirements, uh, including the work of the subcontractors listed. And I'll stand by and allow you to take action on this, this item.
Thank you very much. I will allow council the same leniency as I just gave City Manager Steger to ask questions about all three individually, but, or collectively, but also individually. I do need a motion for item 12B, which is an approval of resolution of acceptance for subdivision improvements for Prairie Haven Second Edition, including detention outlet A. Uh, installed by, so on behalf of the developer, High Five Development LLC. So that will be the motion is to approve that resolution of acceptance. Can I get a motion on 12B? Most, motion made by Councilman Mormon, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. I will open up public hearing. I don't need to, but I know that there are some people who are interested in some, in B, C, and D. Uh, you don't have to come up and speak on any of them, but if you are here, if you wanted to, you sure could. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on item 12B?
Bill Reeffenberger with High Five Development. Uh, as far as I know, everything's going fine. Just in case not everybody's aware, this is a development out on the other side of the airport by Derby Downs. And spoke to you before the meeting and I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I just want to plant a seed in your head that the next phase that we want to get started on next year, and we had a TIF for this last one. And I know most of the councils know people now, so I just want to put that out there and we're going to approach for having that done. And if somebody has questions on that or needs to talk to city, city people about that beforehand so that we want to move forward, but that's a, a very important piece of what we're trying to do out there. Cause this, this development has been specifically intended to be for what I consider workforce housing. I don't like the word affordable housing because it's, it just is so vague. But, uh, I feel it's working on schedule. Except, you know, without all the issues that have come up since we started this before COVID and we had all the issues and the interest and everything. We're still pretty much on track where we wanted to be and, uh, I want to go ahead with the next one. Hopefully interest rates come down. That's going to make things even more affordable. But, uh, the main point of me just be here tonight was just to put out that we will be approaching the council for the TIF. And I will speak the fact that that the city has no obligation under the TIF that we have if we're, I'm, I'm on the hook. So the city has, would never be out any money on that. It's just that that's to be approved through you guys in order to even, you know, get to the state and get to the county. So, uh, other than that, I, as far as the, the approval of this, we've, I think we've got everything done and they've approved it. So just a matter of your stamp of approval and then the city takes care of maintenance of that from here on out. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Reeffenberger, and just wanted to say, uh, thank you for taking the opportunity. I will take from that, I did say, any conversation about what is to come is not germane at the council meeting right now. It's nice to know you warned us, but, uh, we're not going to discuss that tonight. That comes with an actual motion. But, uh, I, what I will take away is things must be going well because you're going to continue building houses and that's great for Watertown.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jerns? Actually, let me ask, is anyone, would anyone else like to testify on this item? Okay, I'll close public hearing. Councilman Jerns?
Not a question for Bill, but a comment about this development. I was spending a little time out there, uh, last night and we talked about supply and demand. Well, demand must be high for workforce housing because there is hardly one that's available out there right now that's been built. Uh, so that says Watertown wants to grow and, um, it's good to see that a, a new development like this, uh, is, is in high demand. So thanks to those that made this happen on the council and for those investors that, that took a chance on Watertown.
Yeah, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to comment or question? All right, hearing none. Um, all the comments were in the affirmative. I don't feel the need to do a roll call vote. All those in favor of approving, approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12C is an approval of a resolution of acceptance for subdivision improvements for Harmony Hills Second Edition. No further, yeah, I think, oh, thank you. Councilman Hoyer, can I get a second? Second, Councilman Jerns, thank you very much. I'll open up public testimony. Would anyone like to testify on this item? Yeah, you don't have to.
In, in sales, you just shut up.
Okay. If you, if you've got the sale, stop selling. Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution of acceptance. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12D is an approval of a resolution of acceptance for Willow Creek Second. for Willow Creek Second Edition. And we will go to, can I get a motion to approve Willow Creek? Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any public testimony on this? All right, hearing none. This is for development going up by Willow Creek Village. So great to see all the development going up around in all parts of Watertown, east, west, and south. So that's what these last three have all been dealing with, east, west, and south. Watertown's growing in every direction. I'm focusing on the really positive things because there are good things going on here. So any questions or comments on item 12D? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12E is an approval of insurance policies and authorization for payment for premiums for general liability, auto liability, and physical damage, law enforcement liability, buildings and content, equipment, property damage, and equipment breakdown, boiler and machinery coverage, and authorization for the chief financial officer to issue a special check. We'll go to said financial officer, Kristen Bobzine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, it is that time of year. So this is for our liability insurance renewal. As you can see, the premium did come in with a 13% increase from last year. Some of that is due just to the addition of equipment and some other buildings coming on to insurance. We also did reach out and ask and there was a 7.5% increase to the values due to market inflation. We also did lose our loss ratio credit. We had some claims in 2024 for some hail, so we did lose that. All in all, the increase will be around $101,000. I feel like it's a good in, a good premium that we received. We've been with South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance for a lot of years. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any public testimony on this? Don't need any? All right. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Hoyer?
I would just ask, Kristen, how long have we been with these guys? And then when we come about this every year, is it customary to just go with what they go with? Or do we shop around at all and go through a bidding process to see if there are other options out there?
We have been with South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. I cannot say for sure the number of years, but I know it's been at least 20. I would say that it's a pretty common one for municipal and county governments to be with. We haven't shopped around. I think it's been probably, I think we did it maybe 10 years ago. We kind of looked and it just, we just couldn't really get any takers either for the type of insurance that we're, we're kind of looking for. Doesn't mean we can't. We definitely can do that if that's what the council would appreciate. But it's kind of.
Sure. I just feel, you know, I see the number that is a 13% inflation. I understand that inflation's being figured into that, but I think that would be a really do trigger for us to maybe consider.
Yep.
Just putting out, and if, you know, if we don't find anything else, we're exactly where we were.
Yep.
So.
We can do that.
Councilman Peters?
I agree with Councilman Hoyer on that. It just, it just seems like we're not out much time and effort just to see what could come back if it's been that long since we've done it. So thanks for bringing that up.
I would voice my approval of that as well. Doesn't hurt to ask.
That's true.
Any further questions or comments?
I have a little comment.
Councilman Jerrance?
Thanks, Mayor. Dealing with these doggone insurance companies for a few years and knowing that you added some buildings and some equipment into that, that's part of that 13%, and knowing that the inflation protector increased the amount of coverage on some of these buildings by seven and a half percent, sure doesn't hurt to check, but that's a smoking deal that we got. And what is happening in the market right now, it is extremely, extremely tough to even find companies to bid it. That's even for a million-dollar building. And I believe you also mentioned we, we got a little bit of our credit taken away on, on claims. Well, I think the rec center was whacked pretty hard. And I don't remember, do you remember what the amount was? I, I remember seeing some of the numbers of what that claims adjustment was, but.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions or comments? Motion is to approve the, to approve the policies, authorize the payment, and authorize the special check. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Finance Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay.
Do you put it to you? How would we go about if we wouldn't make a motion instead?
Oh, yeah. And do you want to put, put it out to bid like right now before we?
If we accept this.
I don't think we have time.
Then we're locked in at this, correct?
Correct.
Then we wouldn't be going back out to a bid and finding alternatives, correct?
I think we'd be going out to bid for the next renewal cycle, not the current one.
Okay, so.
We wouldn't have enough time.
All right, which maybe brings up another conversation then that if, you know, and I know that customarily with things like this, we do just kind of say yes. But I think going forward in the future, if it is at all possible and there is a potential to possibly put it to a bidding process, I think it would be good policy for us to get it in front of us early enough that we could actually execute that for this year when we see those numbers. That'd be my only concern with it and maybe my only comment on it.
Then my, Finance Officer Bobzine?
So if, if that is the, the plan, then what we would do is we would probably start that process. Our normal renewal is August. So just kind of knowing that, we'll back it up and probably seek some other estimates, maybe in that May, June, to then be able to bring those forward. So we're not, so we still have the coverage that we need.
And my question, would we, would that require council action to open it up for bids?
No, it's, it would just be like more of a, a process that we would go through in finance to, to give different insurance an RFP, essentially. So we'll just note that and we'll make sure that we do that here.
Because some RFPs do come in front of council. I was wondering if this would.
You're not required to necessarily put the RFP in. It's just a process that we could do. But we could also put it in front of the council for approval. Essentially, we'd just be reaching out to different insurance companies with our package as far as like the type of liability coverage we would need, the valuation of all of our property and our equipment, so.
I was just thinking as what Councilman Jerrance was saying, it's hard to get any entity to bid on a lot of these. So I'm not sure. I think if we just did an RFP, they can determine themselves as if this is something that they were interested, they could come to us with a proposal as opposed to, I mean, and I'm not opposed to either way. I mean, whatever, if we can get a better price, great. But I appreciate Councilman Jerrance's insight that maybe we wouldn't. But if, if it did require council approval of an RFP and then that would also garner more attention from prospective bidders, then I would say, let's bring that up in, you know, May, June of next year. Any discussion on that? Okay, the motion is to approve the policies, authorize the payment, and authorize the special check. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Please call the roll.
Okay. Mormon?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Allen? Hoyer?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. I do have one announcement, but it is in conjunction with our city manager, Alan Steger. And I will actually let him make it on my behalf. This is something we discussed as far as something to bring forward for the council and for the public.
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed at the last council meeting, I have a set of goals and objectives for myself and the, the city staff, some things that we would like to accomplish over the next six months. I have had an opportunity to sit down with each of you in the council except for one council member I haven't connected with yet to do a detailed review. Would like to then review those goals, objectives, taking your feedback into consideration at the first council meeting in September.
Thank you. And then for my part of that announcement, that is part of the explanation that I did at the end of last council meeting, which is a lot of the city manager's performance review and goal setting is going to be done in confidential, in confidential circumstances as it needs to be. But to the extent that we can express to the public what the goals and the performance metrics are for the city manager, we're going to make those goals public. Because let's give, for an example, if council wants to set a goal for the city manager that we want a more detailed budget and we want to come, and we want it to come in at 2% less than last year, just as an example. We want to make that public so that then the public knows what we're asking and if we're getting it in return. I'm not saying that that's what it's going to be, but that's up for the council to decide. But in order to do that, we, I didn't feel that it was fair. Our councilman, or city manager Steger has always made it clear that he wanted to first hear from everybody. He's had that opportunity, minus one councilman. He's talked to all the department heads. We made progress. That was why my announcement last time, as far as how I want to move forward. I believe that at the next city council meeting, we do have a reason to go into executive session. I have made it very clear that every time we go into executive session, I am going to take that opportunity to discuss the city manager's performance. Because even if it's just a two-minute conversation, I think it's worthwhile to have that conversation, looking at everyone in, face to face on the council. But also, it is my intention to not keep anything from the public to the extent that we can express it to the public. So that's just an explanation as far as how I think we'll go forward. So thank you, city manager. That was the only announcement that I have. Do any other council members have an announcement? Councilman Hoyer?
I don't have an announcement, but maybe an introduction of topics for future discussion. I would just ask, and it, it's something that many of us brought up on the campaign trail. And we do have people, of course, in the community addressing this already. Some don't like the term affordable housing. I like housing that people can afford. We could say that, how about? And so I think it would be, it would behoove us as a council to either form a small group or set a goal where we start maybe having a group of people meet and exploring options for how we can legislate more opportunities for that sort of housing to be made. Right now, we have wonderful developers doing some really progressive, good things in the community, but there's always going to be a base level of housing that might be a little more challenging for them to take on. Maybe not. But I would love to see us talk a little less about it and find ways to take actions, maybe identify three paths forward that could be a way of doing it and go from there.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I would like to actually invite you. I'm not part of every group, but I know Watertown 2050 has a group on housing headed up by our own community development manager, Brandy Hampton. I know that the community, or Watertown Development Company has been working on affordable housing, as has LATC. I have been in on those conversations, as has city manager Steger to the extent that he has been here. But these conversations have been going on for a long time, which does lead me to your second point, which is very well taken, which is it's past time to talk and time to do something because we need actual proposals. We know that there is an issue. We need to bring, we need to address it. So there is some movement on it, but we need to see hardcore proposals. I agree with you totally. Any further announcements or ideas for other conversation? City manager report?
I have a couple of items for the group. First of all, I'd just like to thank our staff and the public for the response to the severe storms that we've had. We've had at least three events resulting in both flash flooding and wind event. We wouldn't have been able to do what we've done from a public safety, street, forestry, landfill, and wastewater standpoint without help from the public. The help with the public hauling debris to, to the landfill has been very beneficial to us. We would have struggled if we took this on on our own to clean up after one storm, much less three. And keep in mind, we've recovered from the storms without missing any, missing any economic opportunity in the community. People are going to work and streets were open.